Well, I'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call please.
Trustee Foley.
Present.
Trustee Webb.
Here.
Trustee Palovich here. Treasure Ellery Summers here. Trustee Carl.
Absent. Sure.
Trustee Reiner.
He's with us online, but he is excused absence as well.
Supervisor Skibby.
Present. And I'm just waiting now to come back so I can.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. Great news.
Living the dream. It's Tuesday.
Usually we hear that one. It's Friday, but we can go with Tuesday.
Do the acronym. So I think it's Tuesday.
There you go.
Okay, so today's budget workshop is looking at the Enterprise Fund 592. And we also have with us our operator in charge, Catherine Lynn of Fletz and Bendabing. Fleece. Fleece. I apologize. F and V. So I can't mess that one up. So I guess actually it may just be better served. I don't know if you, I can get you a mic that way. Everybody can hear or if you want to have the mic at your seat, you can just grab the mic and sit down. That way you're not. I figured we could, we could, we could start this process by going through the CIP that everybody has a copy of. With the CIP, we also have both the draft of the ITAs for sewer and water that Brian Rowley with F and B and I submitted already. So.
ITAs that we sent?
Intend to apply.
Oh, okay.
You know, I like increments.
I was just trying to figure that one out and I couldn't do it. So sorry.
I know. So Ms. Lynn.
Okay, so the, the capital plan is derived from a couple of different sources. Let's start with the sewer system. So in 2021, the township retained F and B Engineering to perform a sewer lift station asset management plan. So they went through and did an inspection on each of the stations, condition assessment, what the equipment was in there, what the condition of the, of the tanks or any piping was and put together a capital plan that is 3.5 million. And that would be comprehensive for all of the eight main lift stations, as well as some minor fixes on a couple of the smaller stations. That amount is highlighted because that is part of an intent to apply for a sewer system funding mechanism. Basically, the ITA puts you in front of Eagle at the state level and then opens up some possibilities for any kind of state funded process, whether it's an SRF loan, a grant. You know, and obviously we're going to be aggressively looking at any kind of funding that would be available from the infrastructure bill that's been passed through Congress, et cetera, to try to help the township have as minimal of a principal cost as possible. So.
Kat, are you reading something that I'm not seeing or?
So if you look at the green line, third line down.
Lift station improvements, SRF. So yeah, so that's what the 3.5 million is. And that includes equipment replacements, piping replacements. There were a couple of the tanks that were originally installed as metal tanks, which obviously over time have become corroded from contact with sanitary sewage. So we're looking at options for replacing those corroded tanks and then any electrical work or whatever. So they're pretty comprehensive in regard to the pump stations. That does not, however, include anything with the sewer system itself, such as the manholes or pipes in the ground in regard to the sewer system. There's been no asset management performed on those systems. So that would be something that as you're looking at, like the second line from the bottom, it says Saw Grant Project. The Saw is like a sewer and storm and wastewater type of funding mechanism. The state had this in place a few years ago and they were able to get some pretty good size loans or principal forgiveness to different communities and they're hoping that they go back through another round of that. So you can see in 2023, broken out over three years is about a million dollars worth of funding potential, 90% grant fund potential on that. So that was what happened with the last round of Saw was that it was a 90-10 match. The township would have to come up with 10% and the state would provide 90% on that if that goes through the same process that they had previously. That would allow you to clean and televise all of your sewers and inspect all your manholes and have a really good condition assessment and capital plan for that part of the system. So we're hoping that that program comes back into play in 2023. So that's not part of the existing intent to apply. That would be something that would go into another application that if that, you know, we'll find out hopefully later this year if they're going to go do another round of Saw grants. Does anybody have any questions on the sewer stuff so far?
Thank you very much.
Okay, there are a couple of other small items. The sewer trailer mounted jutter is getting to the end of its useful life. So we have replace existing jutter in there. And then also potentially if that, that would come into play, that there would be some kind of a developer funded project if there's any kind of expansion that takes place. Basically, you have to put it in your capital plan, but if it were a developer project, you know, it would be something where they would, the township would have, be like a pass through mechanism to do that kind of an expansion. It would be the developer's cost to do that, but it's IDed in the, the capital plan as a possible future project.
Where is the jutter? What is, where is that a part of?
Three lines up from the bottom of.
Yes, it's 25,000 in 2024.
Okay, we moved up. Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
So then the sewer improvements that you're looking at, you know, we have $2 million in 2026. Basically, that's kind of like a placeholder potential for collection system improvements based on whether you would do an asset management plan or AMP for the sewer. So it's all kind of a staged progression. You would apply for a Saw Grant if those are available, hopefully get that funding. And then that will allow you to do a condition assessment and then plan a capital project after that to correct any problems that were found during the inspection process.
Where is the collection system currently?
What do you mean? Where physically? Where is it? It's everywhere. It's the sewer pipes and manholes.
All right. I was thinking about a.
Yeah, so the sewer side has the collection system. It collects all the sewage into the pump stations that then transfer to the wastewater plant. And on the water side, it's the opposite. It distributes the water out to people's houses. So.
Got you, got you, got you. Thank you.
So everything just to also add to that. So everything in our system and actually some of the city system goes to Michigan and then is from Michigan goes by force main that is ours.
Yeah, pumped to the city's wastewater treatment plant.
And the fourth sewer main is actually technically in the city boundaries.
So at Michigan, it just pumps it down like State Street or something like that? Okay.
Yeah, lots and lots of maps. Yeah.
Kat, what is lift stations, towns and auto zone? Is that 450 and 2024? Is that new, repair, replace?
No, that's, that's an existing system for Townsend and Critten. Those are existing, but what you're looking at, if you look at the right column, it says developer funded project on Critten and Port. You know, there's a potential for developer to come in there and want to build some stuff in that existing area where there's sewer and water available. You know, that's part of your M32 corridor that is going through. And so if that were the case, those stations and the sewer would have to be upgraded to allow for whatever business might come in there, whether it's a commercial business or, you know, something else that might come up. But that, that's been identified as a potential development site. So.
So those are two different places.
Correct.
So where Critten is, is probably a.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the one. That's the Omega Electric.
Right. So that's like a half a mile down or so.
Yeah. Yeah. So that, that's the thing is so, you know, depending on what happens in that area, it probably would be the, the Omega Electric one, but we think of them as kind of a pair because they're sort of in that same area. There are two smaller stations that are there that would be subject to upgrade if there was development. So that's basically a placeholder for, you know, kind of a future thought of what might happen on M32 if, if more development goes on in that area.
Okay, but that doesn't, that 450 doesn't represent two lift stations. That just represents a lift station.
Possibly. We don't know what's going to happen there. So like I said, it's a placeholder. Right now, we don't have a developer in the, in the queue unless Nathan knows something that the rest of us don't. So.
Why it's in the placeholder. It's not the meeting to discuss that.
Yeah. So does anybody have any other questions on the sewer portion of the, of the capital plan? Okay, let's go to the drinking water side. So the top three lines on that, the Water Asset Management Program or WAMP, the Distribution System Material Inventory and the DSMI, which is the Distribution System Material Inventory and Asset Management Plan Equipment. So you're looking at a handheld GPS pipe locator software. All of those are things that were submitted by C2AE to the state in order to get some, the DWSRF, which is the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. So those also have been captured in the intent to apply from F and V because they were ranked so low when the previous application was put into place. And we're hoping that those will be reassessed in the next round of funding. So those are part of our intent to apply, which is, is kind of a, you know, we're, we're taking it the next step after what C2AE did. The Water Reliability Study Updates, the, the state requires that every five years the water system reliability study be updated. The Water Reliability Study basically looks at your system in regard to, in a lot of ways, fire flows. So they do a lot of hydraulic analysis on the system. See if there are pipes that are undersized for the rated fire flows that are, you know, that are would be beneficial to having a good ISO rating for the township. So they do, you know, some, some flowing of fire hydrants and, and measuring so that they update a hydraulic model of the whole system. Look at where there are areas where like undersized pipes might need to be upgraded. Look at potential for projects that would loop the system, et cetera. And then that all has to be done, like I said, every five years. So that was last done in 2016. And so that is actually now a little bit overdue to be done for the, for the township. Any questions on that item? The booster station was on there. That was something that was accomplished this past year. So that'll drop off of the, of the capital plan. The South Tower Inspection, you're looking at having, the tower was last inspected in 2017. It is the newest of the three towers, but they still need to be inspected on a routine basis. So that one would have normally been done in 2022 on a five-year interval, but because we have some issues at M32, that one got moved out of it in the, in the priority list. So. And then potentially in the future, based on the 2017 inspection report from Dixon, that there'd be 102,000. That's the Dixon opinion of probable cost. And that's included in the intent to apply for the water system. So we can't apply for anything that has to happen this year in 2022. That would be something that would be a future project. So that would be included in that intent to apply. The M32 tower, we have an inspection. That's going to be what they call a dry inspection. We'll have to drain the tower completely in order for them to do a full assessment of the interior condition. That's in light of the leak that occurred a couple of weeks ago. It's critical that that get inspected. And then based on the previous inspection report from 2017, the, the current leak and cost, Dixon's has done a kind of a, an opinion of probable cost that they just provided to do an interior repair and coating of that. And then an exterior overcoat would be a little over $350,000 for that tower. So. Yeah, they are not cheap to operate. And then you see that Piper Road, which was repainted in 2021, would be inspected again in 2026. So we'll be doing a warranty inspection for that one this year. Basically, they, they will come back a year after the painting project was done and, and do a visual inspection to see if there were any imperfections or anything that need to be addressed in the, in the painting process. So you have a, you know, warranty period on that, that painting project. Some other things that were, were in there. Master meter replacement was completed, but that'll come up again in 2029. So it stays on there as a placeholder. So we don't forget about it. The leak study, at this point in time, we know that there are so many potential water service leaks that are occurring that it's really doesn't make sense to do any kind of a leak study because they're happening in various locations all over the township and they can be quite pricey. I mean, a leak, a leak study could be $26,000 to do a leak study for them to tell you have leaking service lines that you already know about. So we're just going to, you know, kind of defer that until sometime in the future and then see if that would be more beneficial to focus on the actual water mains as opposed to all the service leads after that issue maybe is resolved. Valve turning and GIS identification project, that is something that the 2016 reliability study identified. That's one of the reasons we're looking at some handheld GPS and pipe locator equipment and software up there is that that would help us to locate all those valves correctly on, on the township's GIS mapping system. So that if somebody had to go out in the middle of the night because of a water main break, they would know exactly where those are without having to, to do any kind of a advanced location. And it also helps for your asset management. And, and that's something that could be done on the fire hydrant. So I mean, a lot of that work was done in the past, but it would be done, you know, more accurately, but just because software improvements and GPS improvements. The residential meter replacement, that's something that there currently is a USDA application in for. So that would be a three-year project. That was something that was identified as far as potential, potentially addressing some of the water loss issues. And then the next three items, South Partridge Loop, South Partridge, you know, East Dead End and Four Inch Water Means on Princeton, Partridge, Glendale, St., is it Ange?
St. Ange.
Yep. Those streets all have four inch water mains. The reliability study included those because basically four inch water mains can't provide enough fire flow. So you're looking at, you know, a rated gallon per minute in order to have, like I said, that's part of that whole hydraulic profile of the system and what is needed to have good fire flow rating and to have a good ISO rating, which affects all the township in regard to insurance rates and et cetera. Replacement hatches, those are kind of a minor item, but that is a hazard in regard to, those are older hatches that don't have the correct locking mechanism on them. So that if someone were to enter that, those can't accidentally close on somebody. So we'd like to get those addressed. And then, you know, the booster station and M32 inspections. Those are the sanitary survey identified in, you know, items in Eagle. And so the M32 boost, you know, those pump inspections are something we've been working on and will continue to do, whether it's with subcontractor like Ker Pump or whether it's something that we'll do internally as F and V. So right now, we don't have any costs in there because we're not sure what the route we're going to be taking. And then, of course, our favorite, the comprehensive water service line replacement. So there are approximately 2,600 water services in the system. We're doing a, working on tracking which ones have already been replaced, but obviously, you know, the most logical way to do this is to kind of do what was done on Meyer Road, which is that you would do an entire street or whatever at one time instead of hitting them piecemeal because you're paying à la carte. You know, we anticipate if you were to do it as a larger project that we could get that cost down to about $5,000 per each. Whereas some of the ones that have been done recently, you know, when we've dug one up and then the service lead across the street is leaking and then we have to dig up the whole shoulder and then compact it and all that stuff have been pretty pricey to do on kind of an à la carte basis. So doing them as a whole street project would bring that per service line cost down significantly. So obviously you have a lot in there. You can see on the bottom, there's a little key, which ones were in the clean waters. So that's what they don't, they don't call it wastewater anymore. They call it clean water, clean water state revolving fund. And then the drinking water state revolving fund, so that you can see those are part of the intent to apply forms that were attached to the capital plan. I think everybody's either in sticker shock or I've been really good at explaining this.
Yes.
Extremely thorough as always. I guess if there's no questions to this, we can actually kind of look at the attached with the intent to apply because then it kind of explains the process therein. That Mr. Rowley, on behalf of the township and F and B, has already submitted. We actually just heard back, we're just waiting on both the, the clean water and the drinking water mechanisms, hopefully in upcoming, an appointment date to start the conversations with Eagle in the regards to both of those requests. I think that Brian and I just got an email Monday.
Do you know what that timeline would be?
The, the responsive email from Eagle was that they have had so many application or intent to applies file. They will be with us as soon as possible. So.
Yeah. What you're looking at with that process, and I think Brian went over this when he was here, is the intent to apply is just, hey, we're, we're planning to apply. We'd like to talk to you a little bit about what our project is. And then you'd go from there into a formal project plan and those are due, I believe, at the end of June. So the project plan is going to flesh out more of exactly what is the, the nuts and bolts of the project and also have some, some information which is included on every project application, which is, you know, what is, what is the makeup of this, of the township system? What is the economic background of the township? Because they need to know that in case you are eligible for some kind of additional grant funding or principal forgiveness, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So those, those are the things that would then get included in that more comprehensive plan. So you go from like a, a four-page intent to apply to like a, a 50 or 60-page project plan that would then get submitted in June. So after that initial meeting, then F and B Engineering will give the township, you know, basically a letter proposal to prepare that project plan for submission. And a lot of times those, depending on what the funding mechanism is, those project plan costs can be reimbursable. So they'll, Brian will go over that more when, when he has the time to come to the township after that first initial meeting.
I guess there's a, a two points of, that we can inform the board of, of with the, the sewer side of things. The Wyndham Gardens project is starting today. Actually, they mobilized. They were in the area as of Monday. So that project is starting. That's all their sewer lift stations. A very comprehensive update. And then also another tidbit of good news, which we take it where you get it is with the subcontractor Ker Pump, it used to be Hydrodynamics and a couple of other names, but Ker. The Michigan Lift Station, we have already had the expenditure of replacement of one whole meter or one whole motor that is being fully warranted. So there will be no cost for our point of contact, Larry Don with Ker Pump. So.
Including, including installation.
It's all warranty.
You've already paid for that pump and the installation, but they're finding that there's a warranty issue in regards to the bearing. So they're going to come out and when they are going to be bringing the second pump out to install, which unfortunately those crane dumping pumps are manufactured in Canada. So it is somewhere on the other side of the Ambassador Bridge right now. So that actually delayed the delivery date of that up to three weeks in regard to that second pump. So when it is installed, they're going to go back and do the bearing replacement on the first one under warranty at no cost to the township.
Like I said, you always take every little bit of good news as, as it comes. Trustee Paul.
Seeing all these numbers here, it looks like our water sewer rate is going to need to be about 50 bucks per, per thousand gallons.
Well, and that's going to be part of the conversation is how, how do we look at this moving forward and realistically learn the lessons of all of our past in terms of water and sewer infrastructure and make the appropriate decision based upon said infrastructure. Because water rate increase is inevitable to offset the expenses, even with the intent to apply. As you'll see on the remaining pages is in, in, in theory, a very, very large project scope, very comprehensive. From my position, I'm extremely impressed and happy to work with Brian Rowley with F and B. He's, he's now a good asset to have in terms of the F and B family that's helped our, our system thus far. That's.
But we now have a roadmap. We didn't have one before. And this CIP is going to be also great for the rest of our township as we get working with that too.
Yeah, most definitely. Couldn't agree with you more. It's a long time coming. We're finally getting there. Are there any questions for Kat in regards to either of the intent to applies for CWRF or the DWSRF in regards to those funding mechanisms? The strengthening mechanism, just so that you can understand with on the water side to help with scoring this, you, you look as Brian stated, like capacity is, there's several scoring mechanisms that Eagle will look at. And Eagle definitely does not like dead ends, nor should we like dead ends in a loop system. And so when you look at the east end, west end of South Partridge Point, if we have the ability through that funding mechanism to complete that loop, that's, that's a huge bonus for, because right now South Partridge Point is fed through a bypass main that cuts across the point itself. So it's basically two dead ends as you head backwards 23 and out towards the point. So not extremely long runs of main that would have to be implemented, but let's say the solid bedrock is the biggest hurdle to overcome in regards to those projects. And as Ms. Lynn stated, the considerations also of upsizing the water main, something that I've been stating for a few years now, and that's a consideration that we have too, is increasing from four inch mains and upping that capacity that is fairly large population density neighborhood in the township. So these will correspondingly have discussions with the road commission because as, as Ms. Lynn stated, I forget whose ringtone that is, but it's not mine. Oh, no worries. But this is like, like Trustee Paulie said, a really good roadmap for, for a change of how we have to look at things economically. So if there's no other question.
I just have one quick question. So the four inch mains obviously are not, they don't provide enough fire flow. So could, would we go to six inch or do you have to go to eight inch or what do you?
They'll, they'll go to a minimum of six inch, no matter what was recommended in 2016 reliability study. But you're going to be updating that reliability study planned at least for this, this year. So that may, you know, give you more information, but you know, when they do this, and this starts into the, the higher engineering portion of it, they take all of, they go out and actually toss flows out of hydrants and then they put that all onto a model and then they, they look at what happens to the flows if this happens, if we have a hydro opening or a hydro open there. Pressure demands and we need cold demands, et cetera. So they kind of model all that stuff, you know, through software in order to determine what is going to be happening. And like I said, that's, a lot of that has to do with your ISO rating, which affects insurance rates. Mr. Insurance Guy, you know, for the township and residents, when they have a good ISO rating, that, that helps keep those insurance rates lower.
And were these type of issues or rules or laws in place, say 20 years ago when the system was built?
Absolutely. So, so yeah, when the system was built in the seventies, you know, the, the Safe Drinking Water Act was already in place and it's been updated frequently since then. And actually in 2018, there was a change that was implemented in order. that was implemented in order to have a water system asset management plan. Um so we know that that did not happen in twenty eighteen. So that's why we're looking at going back and, and doing that now, that water asset management plan. Um and so, you know, there's, there's, it's part of the job of the certified operator um and your consultant um to me, you know, stay on track with those changes and regulatory requirements and to convey that stuff to you and, and kind of get ahead of it and, and make sure that they get implemented in a timely fashion.
So at the time this was built, it was built to the specifications recorded.
Built to the standards that were there. Um and so, for example, the, the polyethylene service leads at that time were approved material. Um the plans for all that were submitted to at the time is probably the V N R E or the, you know, V N R. Um and then they were, were been approved at that time as being acceptable. But we all know that, you know, all that stuff is a moving target, things that were approved through the past, whether they were let service lines back in the forties before the days of regulatory permitting or polyethylene pipe in the seventies, that now they would say that's not acceptable material because we know that there are issues with that long term. Um you know, all that kind of stuff changes. And like I said, your operator in charge, your certified operator, as well as your engineering consultant. Their job is to keep you on top of that kind of stuff and make sure that those issues are addressed as they come off.
Any other questions for Catherine? Now we can uh start going through uh Department five nine two, which is uh the Enterprise Fund of uh water and sewer. Um that is also a, a conversation that we'll have to have before we get too far. This is the existing structure um of our funding uh recording mechanisms. Um but uh through USDA RD uh and upcoming potentials of uh the mechanisms that we applied for through the I T A of uh Eagle. Uh we need, will need to look at and formulate how to split both the water and the sewer into two separate funds um for tracking as we move forward. Um and I think uh Brian will probably be helpful in that process uh as we go through in kind of aligning with obviously both the clerk and the treasurer.
Are you thinking that's going to be done in this current fiscal year?
I, yeah, and I guess we'll wait until after the, the conversation with Brian Rowley. Um it didn't seem like we had to have the foot on the gas that hard, but moving forward, they like to have those, both of those mechanisms separated.
I'm just thinking for professional services, we'll probably need some help from Jim.
Yeah, so I just want to have that on the radar as we move forward. So. So moving forward, uh we'll start with five nine two zero 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 four five one, which is the US twenty-three special water assessment on, on the tax bill. Uh oh, we have uh Mr. Reinhard raising a hand.
Uh Mr. Skibby, if I may address the board.
Uh yes.
Uh in looking at the Open Meetings Act, it is my request and intention to participate and vote at this meeting. Uh the reason I'm not present, uh which I'm obligated to say publicly before the me, or at the onset of the meeting, is that uh it's for a medical reason. I had a COVID test yesterday. I'm in quarantine until a uh scheduled medical procedure on Friday. So it is a medical reason that I'm not present. And as I read the Open Meetings Act, it is not just military duty, but it's also medical reasons. I am also obligated to say where I'm located and I am located in the township at my home uh for purposes of, of attending the meeting. And so I do request uh the ability to participate and and vote uh when appropriate and if we're voting today, which I'm not sure we are.
Yeah, I, I appreciate your thoroughness and uh investigating the O M A uh procedural aspects uh to your participation utilizing electronic means. Uh and by all means, uh you're free to participate. I don't expect there being any uh board action uh other than the, the creation and the recommendation moving forward from the proposed budget, sir.
Thank you.
So. Okay, uh with that being said, uh the twenty-three special water assessment, um we can just look at, as, as we have with all departments. If we want to look, if there's any questions with any of the revenue uh line items, we can just focus on the revenue. Um and I'll, I'll wait for questions, comments, concerns with uh the projections that were proposed.
These uh special assessments, these are all fixed uh numbers. If there's a, if, if there's an increase in water bill, are these increased?
No.
Okay, those are all fixed costs.
Yeah, and how many uh to add clarification to the twenty-three bond, how many years are remaining on that bond? Five?
I think it's four coming up in this next. It was five as of December twenty-one.
Okay. So and that's, I guess that's why I just proposed a slightly uh lower number to that amended budget was that hopefully as this comes close to sun setting, that those, those levels are would, should continue to decrease slowly.
People pay them all.
Yeah, so. So again, if there's any questions, please uh let's look at the revenue uh portion of uh the water fund.
The new construction and water and sewer, those are our best guess.
A, a lot of it truly is, as, as most of the budget is. We can look at our historical data points and create just that, the best guess possible.
I prefer estimate.
I, I would. Would you, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah.
I know that Russ being online would like to have the ability to vote, so I don't want, I don't want to starve anybody of that opportunity. Yeah, so the best estimate.
With, with construction uh probably at a relatively slow pace for residential stuff um due, due to current costs, I would.
With, 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 uh but there are some conversations uh as of recent uh and very invigorating discussions as to uh potential uh site condo development uh within the township uh that would have uh an increase to residential capacity. Um so I had a very good uh conversation with some developers uh as recent as yesterday.
Well, we know, we know we have a shortage and it would be a welcomed thing.
Of which uh at the Intergovernmental uh Council Meeting, was that a week ago? It sounds, it feels like three months ago already. Um so that is one thing that uh on behalf of the township and I would implore any other uh township trustees or uh elected officials to uh coming up on March first is the next uh housing task force. Uh both the county, the city, uh township as the primary municipalities are, have partnered with NEMCOG, NEMSCA, various other entities uh as uh financial mechanisms to explore uh the housing crisis in our area. So uh the, the upcoming meeting is at City Chambers, uh March first at one P M. If you're available, uh please join the conversation.
What do they call it, thanks?
Oh, I forget the, the.
Something.
Yeah, housing task force is what you said.
Yeah, it's a, let me look at my calendar because it's um first. It is Alpina Housing Task Force. Uh there is a, an online option. If anybody is not able to physically make it to City Chambers, uh I could forward um the link to the go-to meeting. So please just let me know after the meeting. Are there any questions as to the estimates that are proposed in the?
I just have a, like on the new construction, did we not do anything since two thousand nineteen twenty? I mean, we didn't do anything in twenty twenty-two for new.
I guess that would be, because this is part of the confusing aspect of having G Ls that are overlapping in their um definition. Um I guess I don't know when it comes into your office for payment, how it's getting filed, because we have new construction water, new construction sewer. But then we also have um. Hookup fees. So some of these are actually, um I guess that would be a point of clarification that we should make, either getting rid of uh or disabling both the new construction, water and sewer for clarity. Because I think some of these, uh let's say, for example, uh the newest uh development would be the Starbucks doctors. Um so.
I mean, Kelly bills these the way, you know, she, she'll ask, well, how, how do you want this billed?
Yeah.
And I don't really have a lot to say about how they get billed. Um.
Yes.
Really, the water sales and sewer sales.
Are the primary revenue strips.
Are the primary revenues. And as we get to the end of this, when factoring in the costs and also our C P I um C I P, that, that number is gonna have to potentially change.
Most, it most definitely will change.
That number right now is just a number.
It's a placeholder.
Yeah, it's a placeholder until we get through with the rest of this uh budget and see what, what that has to do and then what kind of effect it's gonna have on the cost of our sales. I should say the price of water, so. Cause the rest of these are pretty well fixed. I'm not, you, you're talking a few, few dollars. When I look at this uh C I P, we're talking about a few dollars.
No. Couple dollars more than a couple dollars.
Yeah, so the proposed um delinquent water bills on tax, nothing was put in there as a proposed.
Yeah, cause I was actually, thank you for clarifying, because when you look at the, the twenty twenty-one and the twenty-one, twenty-two activity, uh their deficit figures. So I didn't know how to propose a deficit figure.
And we need to find out why that even looks like. Right.
Because obviously we know that there's delinquent um bills, especially I think historically, we always have the majority of those that go into taxes are sewer only. Um and I can think of a couple zones that have.
But that would still be out, but that would still be out collected under that.
Yeah, but I think that, I think if you look at it honestly, it seems to me that if you're gonna look at this as a revenue stream, it would be a whole lot better to estimate this close to zero than it would be to put some arbitrary number that may never be able to be collected. And so do I understand that if there's a delinquent water and or sewer, uh and, and if that person or entity doesn't pay, that it goes to their property tax? And that if their home is foreclosed, the, uh then it goes to a sale. And, and the chances of uh getting blood out of the proverbial rock gets to be close to zero.
But we get made whole, when the county makes us whole at settlement.
If they get enough money for the property, right?
No, we get, that settlement time, we get them, the money. And then the county collects when they go.
I got for closure.
Right.
If I remember correctly, we need to review these because we went through this.
With him.
And it's getting, we're putting it in as revenue under the water sales and sewage sales. And then somehow it's getting counted again as delinquent water bills on tax. It was being counted twice. So I know that's why we, the negative is to correct something.
Yeah, I didn't know it was a journal entry.
Yeah, we'll just have to check it out and get back on that one. But I don't even think there should be anything under delinquent water bills on tax because it's already being shown.
So and I just double clicked on, on the, the delinquent.
As in part of water sales and sewage sales.
Yeah. So anyways, yeah, I guess we can come back to that as we will be coming back to uh both. Most bad. Any other additional questions as to the estimates proposed?
So under the, we recently took a rate increase on our water, right?
That is correct.
And this is contemplated in here.
Administered, but there again, it's, we know that now that we actually, we've gone through, I think, three or four different iterations. It started with uh engineering with CAF and now we're fine tuning it uh in terms of the C I P. Um because we're gonna have to come back as Trusty Paulie stated, when we get to the end of knowing what our, our C I P is of functioning, we looking at our, we, our known costs that we have in terms of a contract or operation and maintenance, which is obviously being extremely underfunded uh as the rise to that contract because of the residential service lines. That's why we're.
Okay.
We're looking at it in every, every vein possible. Uh Trusty Reinhard, do you have any uh additional questions as we go through the revenue G Ls of the Enterprise Fund, sir?
Um, no, I don't. I was looking at the totals and try, and that was, I was baffled down there at the total, but uh maybe I'm missing something. Maybe we haven't gone all the way down yet.
And, and for a point of clarification, the totals on the C I P or on the uh budget itself, sir?
I'm looking at total revenues of six million seven hundred, is, is that right?
Uh yeah, well, that's, that's an accumulative total. This is going through uh B S A lays it out. That's why it looks as high as it is. It's not solely the enterprise.
Okay, okay, cause that's, okay, cause that's the hard copy I've got in front of me as a different number. So that was throwing me off. Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Uh any other questions with the estimates proposed in the revenue G Ls? If not, we'll move forward to the expenditure side of uh the Enterprise Fund, which starts uh technically with uh clerical wages payable on I A G L five nine two five three seven seven zero two zero one zero. Uh these are outside of waiting uh for work comp and some of the other insurance figures uh from trustee Lappin. Uh these are pretty well-known by union contract. This is accounting for a, uh as you'll see, going through every other department, um a three percent increase uh to all the administrative assistants within that arguing unit. So I guess we can just, as we continue to, to graze down this uh fund. If there's anything that sticks out, please.
Health insurance premium, Blue Cross, eleven grand's upper, Kelly.
Uh yes, that is the only.
She's the only employer.
The only employee in that we have. And it said, uh the Medicare, I mean, there, there's some, some, the John Hancock, the Medicare. Uh these are kind of, I can just do nine point five as, as the, the aggregate from uh her increase of three percent. So we can, those are easy to uh, to input downstream.
Um on the on the salaries payable for laborer. Job function is to be in, in, in the field. And.
Well, and this to, to, to kind of go on this whole vein, this is actually the conversation that started, uh I believe uh two or three months ago when we were actually put out for uh notice of a part-time maintenance individual.
Okay.
Um so that's why I just left a placeholder in there for somebody that would be able to potentially facilitate a part-time maintenance.
All right.
Agreement.
All right.
Which has, which has been a, a lackluster performing marker.
All right.
It'd be nice to get the word out better again.
I do have those, those.
Well, as we know, finding, finding people that actually want to work amazingly in any capacity in any department is, is a struggle. So. Uh. Any questions as we go through?
This water and sewer. Oh, just uh down towards the bottom. Said pretty well a uptick estimate of pertaining to the water and sewer.
Yeah, this is our, our, our. Yeah, this is our our checks that we write from right to the city for for that. We know that they had an increase this past year. We know that come fourth, they're starting, the city councils already started their budget process. They're looking at their fiscal years in July. So we can anticipate that there's going to be yet another moderate. I've asked the mayor for clarification if he knows what kind of a percentage that they're looking to raise their rates. That is an unknown figure as it stands. So again, another another placeholder. Trustee Reiner, do you have your your hand up, sir?
Yes, thanks. The question I had was on the eight oh three line. It's a double, a double figure there. It looks like we've doubled that. And is that is that because of the ongoing anticipated costs for completing the
Yeah.
Discussions that are going on.
There there again, as we are all very aware of, this is also a dark, but we know that we have a timeline that we have to show fairly significant progress with the discussions that are happening currently with the city. But anyway, we slice it, there's going to be an inherent increase. I I just aired on the side of a historic high, looking back at the activity of twenty twenty one and want to make sure that we encapsulated whatever may come of the discussions. So. Yes.
So professional and contractual, that's up quite a bit, too.
Well, we have our annual contract of what is that, six hundred? Well, and it just increased this by contract at a rate. So I believe that was at six hundred and fifty three thousand. I'm trying to.
For what is it?
For the for our contract with F and V. The reason I increased that number is because we I tried to find some kind of a happy solution or not a solution. A Band-Aid, if you will, because we know that the portion of that is the operating operation and O and M costs, operations, maintenance. And we know that we're deficient in those funding mechanisms, especially with the invoices and the amount of residential line breaks. So henceforth, that's increased to hopefully put a little bit more meat back on that bone, so to speak.
But does does that include the the two hundred and fifty thousand? Okay, all right.
Yeah, so I there again, just tried to, we know that we have a deficiency there. That may be a drop in the bucket, and that's why we're moving forward with the intent to apply, et cetera, et cetera. But we know that that has to increase with what we've seen over the past year. Any anything that, any questions that anybody has, please?
So so if the city were to make another adjustment in their water and sewer rates, we are basically compelled to match it.
We know that we are not only compelled to match it, but we actually are compelled to match it and increase it because we as a water and sewer provider and transmission provider, we have inherent costs operating, conducting business.
I just wanted to make sure that we're 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 at least raising at this at the same level.
Yeah, so we've already, we've already in this past quarter did a five percent increase. And that's going to be kind of this, the exercise as we work through this fund is looking at what our our static known costs are going to be and looking at a realistic projection and giving the consideration that come July, there will be another anticipated increase on the city, which we're currently charged the same rate as every city consumer.
Yep.
So. Yes, trustee Paul.
Cat, if I may ask, did Cat look at the sheet and just with her eyeballs?
Cat. Um, yeah, I mean, I don't know if she's looked at that sheet, but Cass, we've we know that we have inherent upcoming costs and and so.
I'm sure she did, but just.
We we're going to have to, this is going to be an ongoing exercise and it's going to be as all budgets are, especially this budget, given the consideration that it's it's a business enterprise fund. We have to make sure that we're not only, as trustee Paul or trustee Lappin stated, covering the anticipated increase of the city and those costs, but what routine costs that we have going on ourselves as a provider. So it will be, it will be fluid. Oh, yeah, this is. Any questions?
I suspect the answer is yes, but under postage, we get a bulk rate?
No.
Oh, really?
We don't send them out bulk rate. We need first class. I'm not sure why.
There was a reason. I don't remember.
That's the, I'm one of my favorite excuses in the world.
But we have questions in the past, so I don't remember.
We can, we can, we should revisit it. I know that one of the, one of the mechanisms prior to even the first term of the the majority of the current members of this board is previously, the township board used to send out postcard bills. And that was changed to an envelope bill because of people's predetermined expectation of privacy in regards to that information. So.
Well, that's reasonable. So I just, do we get more and more people paying?
We do.
But it still requires that we send out a bill.
Well, we have a lot more people when they sign up for the ACH, the direct payments every month. They a lot more people are signing up to get an email bill. Sometimes they want an email bill and a hard copy bill.
Okay.
But more and more, you know, people are signing up.
Because I think that's that's a really good thing that we have going is the amount of people that you've in the past year had sign up for, I mean.
And we're getting more and more all the time. And I don't know the number of people off the top of my head that sign up. Oh, it's huge. I mean, this last one we did just this month for the fifteenth was twenty five thousand.
Yeah, I realize that.
Right.
And it will be nice because eventually that means that some of our postage costs can although, again, it's not a huge amount, but a little bit here, a little bit there starts to add up.
And we really do, and people call and they want to, whether it's tax or water, if they want a copy of their receipt, we really, our first question is, is do you have an email address? And we email it to people versus putting postage on it.
Good.
Technology is not always frightening.
Well, and the nice thing about the email is that we can gain that information.
Well, it is because people's phone numbers change all the time, but a lot of times they don't change their email. So we have to reach out to them.
Yeah.
That's why I just went adding email addresses.
Yeah, I know. I know. You, I believe, have more email addresses than anybody else I know.
If I could just touch on one more thing, too, as far as the revenue goes, probably the last nine months, I would guess. You know, Rhonda and Kelly have been making, you know, phone calls every month and Rhonda's really taken that over even more so. Because she's, I mean, she's very good at it. And then Kelly kind of offsets by doing some posting and stuff. But we have, I mean, so many times she'll make the phone calls and the next morning there's an ACH sitting there or there's a, you know, payment in the Dropbox or they're in the next day or, I mean, it it's really gone down a lot.
They're they're calling for collection reasons.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so they, yeah, kudos.
What a concept.
In that regards to following through with collections. It's, it has helped. And increasing the the capacity of data entry and getting emails and curbing costs and.
Asking you shall receive.
Um. There again, I'm 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 open to any.
So gas and oil.
Eight six zero.
Yes, eight six zero. So gas and oil, obviously, ratchets down more and more and more. But I'm wondering why there would be much of a bill at all in that. Oh, sure. I'm thinking, I'm thinking vehicles. Good call. That's.
Tracker. Yeah, it is pretty miniscule, finally. But. No. And actually, I'm seeing on the live feed a negative four dollars. So, yeah, it is thankfully, that's that's a cost that's been curbed with our current scenario.
Yep, yep.
We know that there will be one change as is represented in the the CIP and it'll be a consideration now if you drop down to five nine two five three seven nine three seven zero zero zero, which is water tower maintenance. We knew by the CIP that at a loan number, that will actually be three hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. Where I put a place marker in of two hundred thousand. That was before this was created well before our ongoing conversations with Brian Rowley and Catherine in regards to updating and well before our our last issue, which has exacerbated and shuffled the order of importance between the the two remaining water towers. So I guess my my thought to this funding GL would be to increase it probably double from what it is up to four hundred thousand dollars. But the conversation I want to also add to this is that by the final rules of utilization of funds of the ARPA monies that we received of just over nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, it would be my recommendation that we explore that potential utilization of funds to retrofit and make that that power whole this fiscal year. And that's why we're moving forward with the Dixon Engineering Survey, so we know the scope in its entirety.
We haven't received the other half of that money.
Yeah, the second tranche isn't dispersed.
I thought you said we received nine fifteen. We didn't. We only.
We will once.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, that we haven't received the second tranche.
I would, personally, I would rather see the ARPA money be used in these sorts of areas that are sort of fixed one time costs.
Yeah.
Than to utilize them.
Well, and I know for for recording purposes and auditing purposes, I think we should all be on that same board. Larger singular expenditures are better for tracking and recording mechanisms than a thousand or nine thousand, you know, one thousand dollar increments for the next seven years. I, yeah, so I I there again, it would be my recommendation that that would be a consideration of this board to have the discussion of utilization of those monies for this cost. Yes, trustee Paul.
Also, on the CIP, there's a meter replacement for three, three thirty five. But that's tentatively going to be a grant.
No, that is a loan through, it's a prospective loan with an annual two different determinations of payback, twenty years and thirty years through the USDA rural development. I I think if I'm remembering correctly, I want to say if it's a thirty year payback, it is at fifty two thousand.
Like a fifty two thousand and a seventy four thousand.
Yeah, if it were twenty years, it would be seventy thousand. If it were thirty years, it'd be fifty two thousand.
That was for the full million, all right?
Yeah, that that project for the meter replacement project, that request is at one point two million dollars. But there again, that would be through a grant. A conversation that we can definitely have when we sit down jointly with the planning commission in regards to the CIP and those potential utilizations. First and foremost, we started the conversation, I think everybody inherently would lead back to what are the revenue mechanisms to ensure that we have the capacity to make whole that potential request of funding. So.
Just another question, Michelle, do we have any kind of response from the planning commission to to come to our CIP meeting?
I think we had three people.
Three? So I'd be the fourth one?
Yes. Our whole board has responded. They'll be there. And then three from that.
Good job, guys.
On the.
Responding.
When we start looking at these sorts of expenditures, and I know this is probably not the right venue for this, but it's at least worth discussion, the the meter replacement USDA grant. A thirty year repay. These meters have a thirty year life expectancy?
And the ones that the township is currently utilizing the natural meters, those do have a twenty to thirty year lifespan. The previously used meters, the census iPhone meter, but not those, they're only a ten year lifespan because they have a lithium ion battery. So when we were looking at meter specifications, then the things that we're looking at is something that will give you guys a life expectancy.
Yeah, I'd rather not pay for something we don't have.
You know, obviously, you know, from from an operational perspective, you know, twenty years is a long time to be out in the field for residential meters, you know, that would be adequate. When you start looking at larger commercial meters, which I don't either incorporated in that, that meter replacement, so they're most tend to have a lower lifetime, just because it's sort of like from down there in a car, you know, once it gets to the point where it holds millions, you start losing accuracy. So.
I would have no idea.
A twenty year minimum, thirty thirty years is probably, you're going to be right back at your
Yeah.
point where you're going to have to look at replacing them all again. So that's what the board will have to decide whether you want to have it, make it right up to the red shift limit and have them a thirty years and then have to go ahead and replace them all again. Or whether you want, you know, go through a shorter funding period and then start maybe staging it or putting aside capital funding so that you don't have to take out a loan for the entire house next year. I have this to be required.
So this would be.
Appreciate your enthusiasm.
Yeah, at a minimum, you'll be retired.
So this would be considered for the meter replacements, it would be considered a grant.
No, it'd be considered a loan.
That we have to pay that.
The ten percent.
No.
No, no, this is a full on loan.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, so it's not a grant at all.
An APR, no.
It's just a loan.
It'd be kind of like me stating of budget hearing when these are budget workshops. So.
That's what I just wanted to be clear.
No, and I believe the APR is at what, one point seven three percent as a rough aggregate?
If we didn't now.
Correct, yeah. So conversations that will, like I stated, this this department will be very fluid because we have a lot of variables at that.
What dues and memberships do we have?
American Water Works Association, there's Mistig. There's, there's more than, there's more than meets the eye if you're a transformer.
We 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 take care of all the professional memberships and training for the staff now that are every township still maintains any WWE membership, a little water membership. Obviously, the Mistig is a department in order to be part of that process. And so, you know, there that there is still some costs of township for that. But as far as individual staff.
There may be costs, but is it is there benefit?
Well, I mean, basically that allows the township to participate in training sessions. I know there was some stuff that came through in regards to, you know, some of this infrastructure funding that I don't.
I've I've attended.
The township is a member community, rural water is a member community. The township is a member community. Rural Water is a member community. Rural Water will do assistance to systems under ten thousand, you know. Population so that they, they can help with, you know, different. Different aspects of regulatory stuff if needed. And, you know, they, they, they do have a benefit too, as far as keeping the township. That's another, another way that the township can stay informed in regard to, you know, regulatory requirements and whatever. Coming down the pipe.
So vehicle insurance, um, is that just on the blue truck? Or do we have to insure other pieces of equipment like the judder thing or? I didn't know what was included in that. Vehicle insurance. For what?
Well, typically a vehicle, a licensed vehicle, not a piece of equipment.
So it's probably the blue truck.
And I don't know what.
I would assume that would be, it should be the only. General liability property vehicle insurance.
If it's just one vehicle, it's going to be, that's high.
Nine six five dot one zero zero.
Yeah, yeah, that's, and I just expanded on the activity. And it's. So I don't know if there's additional. Property of, if there's.
We'd have to more.
We'd have to look at how that's.
But otherwise, if it's, if it's one vehicle.
That would be.
That, that'll.
A really nice vehicle, right?
Well, it would be, it would be appreciably high.
So since we're on the subject of, of that, is there a way? Since we'd have to put money into that truck, you know, with, because of the winch or whatever, you know, that. F and B uses for that. If we parked that, what would be a way around that? Could something be put on one of the other two vans to?
Well, the, the, the biggest, the biggest issue is the gross vehicle towing capacity. Uh, that truck is a three-quarter ton frame, which inherently allows. Especially when full, the judder to be towed safely. Um, I think that their current vehicles, including the van that we've sold, uh, to F and B is all half-ton frames. I started looking into costs of potentially, I think that's. What, what is that tipping point? And right now with the inflation of nearly twenty-eight percent in the used car market. It may be advantageous for us to actually actively look at having that three thousand dollar expenditure and limp through.
Should we put something in vehicle maintenance? Because we have nothing in there right now.
Yeah, and, and the error of this conversation, it would be my recommendation this to, to actively look at improving that vehicle to get through at least a year. So.
But it, but none of, for my question, it is, is only one vehicle, right?
One.
Alright, well, so that three, thirty-three hundred dollars more likely be.
There may be.
Five hundred dollars.
Well, we'll review that. But vehicle maintenance, should we put four thousand, five thousand on there?
I'd say four on the light side.
Right.
So five thousand dollars. Would cover.
You know, there's going to be more.
Yes, Laura.
So. This is just a thought, but instead of putting money into that vehicle. Would we be better off like hiring a tow company or whatever to haul? That judder or whatever piece of equipment that it would be for the, I don't know how often that is used for those purposes, if it would be cheaper to.
It's not a frequency as much as it is an expectancy thing. So the fact of the matter is when we need to do that. We need to be able to mobilize it, but right now.
Okay.
Because normally it's in response to a problem.
Okay.
Um, so if we had to call someone in to move that for us, we're waiting on them though. Mobile line instead of having ability to just.
Okay.
Well, I hate to keep. Trying to. Throw money at something that just doesn't have any value. And, and I appreciate the idea that, that used cars right now are at a premium. And that. If we got. Uh, five thousand dollars, six thousand dollars for this vehicle, uh, we'd have to spend another twenty thousand dollars. To, to replace it. So.
At a bare minimum.
At a bare minimum, yeah.
Yeah, because a newer, just a, a plain Jane, three-quarter ton short bed truck. Um, that may be within less than five years.
Yeah.
You're right now looking at knocking on forty thousand.
Oh, I know. Oh, I know. And so.
Three thousand to four thousand is a little bit more palatable in this market to really explore what it's going to do long-term.
Right, well, I mean, we're not looking at it from a resale standpoint. We're looking at it just as a utility standpoint.
Yeah. At this point, that's its only function is.
Yeah.
Cause yeah.
And so, and so we don't have. Anything else that can accommodate it. Uh, the, the, because, just because of a capacity.
It's, it's a capacity in regard to those, I think it's a point capacity. It's also a height issue. And we were looking at what it would take to retrofit, like a pickup truck. Um, in order to accept that, that winch. And the problem is, is it sits lower. So if you're going to utilize it to, like say, pull pump out, you know, the boom on, the winch could be extended. Horizontally, but there is no vertical adjustment on it. So now we don't know. You know, what, whether it would be useful to even try to do that with a piece of equipment because it sits so much lower. Um, we'd have to upgrade the hitch on the truck and the wiring harness and when the winch actually has controls kind of follows. So that would have to be some modifications that would make the other truck.
Which, which would, I would assume just knowing some of those costs would be probably equal to or greater than the amount of money that we could put into the vehicle to get us a solid year downstream. It's not, not an ideal scenario.
No, it's not.
But it is.
Yeah, we can't.
But it is what it is.
We can't.
So are you adjusting?
I adjusted, uh, the vehicle maintenance up to, as a recommended, up to five thousand dollars. Yes.
That's nine three eight.
Up to what? I'm sorry.
From five to, yeah, five thousand dollars. Are there any other? I know that, uh, let's say, uh, I believe Kelly's computer, uh, received a new SSD, a solid state drive. Uh, that's, uh, addressed her computer hardware issues, uh, that she's been having. Trying to, to squeak through with bare minimum.
Where's that? Is that under equipment?
That, no, that would be computer hardware. It's, I didn't change any of that because it actually took place this fiscal. So it's pretty minimally funded. I believe it only has two hundred and fifty dollars of funding in it.
What happened to rent expenses? Those numbers have been thrown around for.
Now, which GL area?
Uh, five thirty-seven, nine forty.
Okay, rent expense.
Isn't that something that the auditors put in?
I think that was.
As well, they're, you're on journal entry.
Yeah, because if you look at the activity in nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one, it's identical figures. I think that was probably.
What we charged them for all that space in the back.
Yeah, it was a journal, a year-end adjustment by S L K. On both.
So we, we didn't need it last year and we don't need it this year.
No, it was just a placeholder for, um, journal entries of the auditor.
So we should put it in there.
Yeah.
It's going to show it as an expense.
Yeah, because it's always a year-end. So that's when, but when I, sometimes I get. In a groove when I'm looking at activity and then I'm seeing that there's zero adjustments or amendments. So that was my error. So I would probably, I'll just populate this as. Uh, the numbers that have been previously.
Then are you reducing the insurance cost?
We're going to look into that. There may be a potential reduction. Uh, once we look into that deeper, trustee Reiner.
Yeah, there will be.
Because I'm pretty certain that we don't have a Bugatti that we're insuring for a couple of months.
I'd, I'd be surprised if that's nine hundred bucks.
Yeah. So, yes.
Also, back up. What happened to heat? Is there, did we do something different there?
What numbers?
Five thirty-seven, nine twenty-four right up the top.
I think it's another one of those year-end adjustments that we get from.
Well, should we therefore?
Follow.
Match the thousand six hundred?
One, six, four, six. Adjusted accordingly as a recommendation. Any other questions? Obviously, we're going to be kind of. Coming back to this one routinely, that's just a fully.
Bond principal water, we're at the very bottom. Five thirty-seven, nine nine four oh one oh.
Yep.
We had, how did the bond all of a sudden come up when it wasn't in the past?
Uh, this was, I believe, also a recommendation of our auditors of, we have to.
I guess this is the bond payment for the US twenty-three water project.
Correct.
I guess I'm not sure what Norm's asking.
Well, apparently in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one, we didn't say anything. I just.
Probably.
I'm sure we did.
We did.
Under a different GL or something.
Yeah.
So, so the, the two line items is, one is the actual principal payment above it. It's just that.
The interest.
So that, that, that principal payment will remain.
The principal and the stack and the interest, and the interest should be, you know, as everybody's house payment. You, you take care of the interest in that and then you start working on the principal. So.
Yeah, so it should be it. I see it. At one point, it looked like it actually went up, uh, and then, then down, which would be unusual. So like in the twenty-one. Twenty-two, it's no, see, I'm like, trying to line up my list here. It was thirty-seven thousand two hundred.
And, you know, that's our, that's kind of our current activity.
But we're not at the end of three thirty-one, twenty-two.
Yeah, so, so is it anticipated that there'd be another five thousand dollars in principal?
I think the next, isn't it doing April?
Pretty soon. I think it's April.
I'd have to. April and October, I believe. One payment.
Well, it won't make a big difference, but it's, seems a little high and I suppose it'd be better to be higher than. Underfunded.
Amen. Any other additional?
But as we go through this, or we went through this, our, our big concern is.
What rates? Yeah, starts and stops with what we need to do as a board to encapsulate known costs. And forecasted the best of our abilities on versine expenditure. Uh, we're just going through, this is one good step in the right direction. We now have a CIP that we now we can look at our twenty twenty-two CIP costs of seven eighty-five. Overlay that with our known contractual obligations, our operate, operation and maintenance schedule. Uh, funding mechanisms. And really look as we come into our new fiscal of April one, having a projected, uh, water and sewer rate. That will make this fund as whole as whole gets for the foreseeable future of this upcoming fiscal.
When do you anticipate having the increase in the water rates? Is it, will it be prior to the end of this fiscal?
April one. But what I think we need to look at, either starting proactively before the end of this fiscal. If not, starting our new fiscal with a new solid rate. That was my original anticipation is starting the new year. But given the consideration of what we've known for our, our revenue and our disparity between revenue and expenditures. Uh, that's a conversation that we need to be having here in Tilly. And with the anticipation that, knowing that in July, at the beginning of the city's fiscal. They're anticipating having a rate increase themselves.
I can't read the numbers of the nation. So at the end. Are we over budget? Are expenses exceed our?
With, with, with the, the, the changes to the recommended, thus far, yes, we are, we, we were as a proposed budget. Uh, four thousand in the black. Uh, we are with just the, the handful of changes that we made in regards to, uh, the recommended. We are now, uh, ninety-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars in the red.
And I just want to remind everybody, there's nothing in savings. I mean, it's very small what we have. We can't rely on savings.
So we're ninety-eight thousand plus, we need another seven hundred. Eighty-five thousand.
Yeah. But then there again, we, we also know that there's one GL that is, is currently funded at two hundred thousand dollars. That will probably be a four hundred thousand dollar expenditure, but wouldn't be a utilization of the revenue stream itself out of this. It could be the potential expenditure of ARPA months.
Oh, you mean the, um.
That's right.
So.
That's right.
So that's not saying that that affords us that security blanket of flexibility, but it's something that you have to put in the back of our minds. That there are some calculated costs that are anticipated as estimates in this budget.
Yeah, what it, what it certainly could do is give us the opportunity to have, uh, I guess the equivalent of a capital outlay. In the, in the enterprise fund. Would that be held, that would be held in a, in a separate fund, right?
It is currently housed, I believe.
No, 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 I'm sorry. The, the, uh, any monies that, if we could take advantage of the ARPA money. That means that we will have a positive cash flow in the, uh, enterprise fund.
Able to put in a savings account.
And would that savings account be put into a separate savings account?
Yes, but we just started one.
Right, well, that capital outlay, but that's up.
No, the, the enterprise fund itself has a separate.
Okay, fair enough. That's where I was going from. Okay.
So round numbers were nine hundred thousand dollars, sure.
Well, if you're just, if you're just adding the seven eighty-five of the CIP in its entirety.
Yes.
It, you could look at it that way, or you could say, well, we agree as a board that we're going to utilize every single cent of ARPA money in, in the enterprise fund. And then we're two hundred thousand in deposit. So it's all different perspectives.
So we still, this, uh. This three hundred and thirty-five grand for the tower potentially can come out of our.
Anything with the new rules, and I afford everybody the opportunity to do as much reading into the ARPA, uh, new final rule as possible, but yeah.
But what I'm getting at is, so round numbers, nine hundred thousand, if we don't include that. So my, my point is, either we have to come up with some kind of revenue, which is increasing our water and sewer rates to generate nine hundred thousand dollars. Am I correct in saying that?
If, if there, yes, in the activity, if there were no use of ARPA monies, then that would be the exercise at hand is. How do we increase our, our rates with our known expenditures to encompass that nine hundred thousand?
But then we look at, just jump over to the next year. Oh my goodness. We're talking about.
So, and that's why, if you look at the far, and, and by all means, great conversations. That's why we've already started the process with both of the ITAs and hopefully mitigating some of those massive numbers in that CIP.
So as we increase our water and sewer rates, I guess we need to have somebody calculate what we have to increase these rates to compensate for those numbers. And see if that's a palatable number. How are we going to do it and what can be done?
Palatable may not even be the proper adjective, because there's never anything that's going to be palatable in the water and sewer utility business. Palatable is why we're in the deficit in both our communities to a lack of funding. Um, because unfortunately, uh, the rule of thumb is, if it's buried, it's not a problem unless you go to fill a glass of water or you go to flush a toilet. Then that becomes.
So, so like, so am I leading in the right direction on that? We, we need to come up with nine hundred thousand dollars of income for this year?
I guess I'm not figuring where you're getting there.
I think I know where Norm's.
I think I understand, yeah.
If, I, I think, uh, we're, notwithstanding any ARPA money at all, norms correct.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
So, so, but I would take Norm's comment a step further. And I would say that notwithstanding the use of ARPA money, we should continue to fund the enterprise fund. Uh, even though we can use some of this ARPA money. So we should look at it as though we need nine hundred thousand dollars.
Then let's just get right to a grass tax, because that, that, I agree. We have to look at it as if we don't have ARPA money to utilize, because it's, it's a drop in the bucket. It's a flash in the pan.
That's a hidden bonus. That's, it, it might come in, it could come in, but we, we kind of plan that. It's not there right now, but it could be.
Yeah, it's very, it's very likely that we, I think it's a hundred percent certainty, right?
Yes, we haven't gotten the second trench.
But I mean.
But we are dedicated to nine hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars. It's already been determined. Or made the determination by the Department of Treasury. These are known figures.
So my, my question on the ARPA money. That has to be spent by such and such a time, right?
Twenty twenty-six. It has to be earmarked by twenty twenty-four. It has to be expended and accounted for by twenty twenty-six.
Okay, okay. And so, and so. I, I would favor the adjustment in a, in a water and sewer rate. Uh, even though we could use some of the other money and I would like to be able to use that money up until twenty twenty-six instead of just burning it all up now.
And Steve, I would implore you to come to the reality of day-to-day operations of this township because that may be a farce.
Well, maybe, but I mean, it, it would be nice if we could, if we could, if we could bank some money.
I, I agree.
And so now I.
Can keep the.
Yeah, I mean, in an ideal world.
In an ideal world, I wholeheartedly agree with both of you gentlemen, but the reality is we don't live in the real world here.
Yeah.
It is, it is has unfortunately historically defunct funding mechanisms. And not only the enterprise one, but every fund that we have.
Well, it's exactly what you said earlier relative to the city and the township that we both found ourselves politically watching what rates as opposed to reality rates.
Yep.
So around numbers, I, I come back this nine hundred thousand dollars. So I don't think I'm far off on that.
No.
But if we're considering nine hundred thousand dollars, why don't we make it a million or something of that area? Because now we're starting to work towards the next year is gonna have to be another something. That we're gonna have to be leading into and some things may fluctuate that it might help us. But we're starting to work towards that's what the capital improvement fund is for.
Correct. Yeah, so you, you're, you're right. Yeah, I think for, for this exercise. We have to look at, we don't have nine hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars that we can utilize. Because that is a one-time dispersment, which will never happen again in any of our lifetimes. So how best to utilize those monies?
Right.
When we know that we have not only deficiencies in this enterprise one, but in every single aspect of township.
It's a bonus.
It's, it's simply that and we know that we don't look at salaries based on overtime or bonuses. And so we have to live within our means.
One shot.
So, yes, Ted, I just don't like talking and I, I like getting right to the, the meat and the potatoes instead of dancing around.
Coming back to. Who is or how is a rate gonna be determined? Or what are we gonna have to do to generate these ones?
We're just gonna sit down looking at what we know for our upcoming utilize overlaying, as I already stated, are looking at our CIP. The known costs, our costs of our contractual obligation, what our deficiencies are in operations and maintenance.
But who's working on that?
I will, I'm sure, because I'll probably be utilizing the expertise.
So we need to get this done before.
April one. That's part of this process. We're, the first day that we've talked about this. I, I'm, I'm actually just trying to finalize a grant application for the fire department of forty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. For training materials that I want off my desk as the deadline is today. I mean, I don't know.
So.
If we could all clone ourselves, we could get probably a lot more work done, but.
No, as this was coming up, I'm not saying anything about that, uh, Nathan. What I'm saying is now we need to work on a process of figuring out. I have, I have no idea how rates are figured and I'm sure that's where.
It's a rate study.
Catherine with no.
And that's, that's the thing is that there's a great study going on, but there's some other things going on that, you know, we're not.
We're gonna discuss here today.
But that's, you know, that's the thing is you're gonna look at the fact, though, that some of these projects are gonna turn into bond payments. And, and the reason that they're done that way is so that you have control of costs. So, for example, right now with the water service replacement. We are kind of. On an à la carte basis, we're, we're, you don't, you know, they're coming up and getting fixed as they go and there's no way to predict that cost. Whereas if you look at the, um, you know, even though it's a large price tag, thirteen million dollars, it's. We're amortized at over forty years and convert that instead of a CIP number of four million dollars into a bond payment of. You know, a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars a year. Now it becomes a predictive cost and you can use those to do your rate analysis. So that's, that's where a lot of these, these applications are gonna, gonna come in as far as the intent to apply. So once we know that you have that and the state says, yeah, we're, we're gonna give you funding for, you know, seventeen million dollars or whatever of water system improvements. And now you have forty years to pay it back. Now you have a fixed cost that you can budget for, and that's when you do your rate analysis. You don't do your rate, rate analysis based on these numbers because you're gonna have a huge inflationary curve. That's why you're going to look at, um, funding, look at loans, grants, bonds, whatever you have to do. So that just like buying a house, you might buy a hundred fifty thousand dollar house unless you're really lucky, you don't have a hundred fifty thousand dollars. You're going to budget that based on a thirty-year mortgage with principal and interest and then use that to figure out your budget. Same thing here.
Yeah, cuz it's better to operate with a known number than what we've historically always done is chase our tails and put out fires.
So I'm a residential meter replacement. That's something we'd have the first phase plan for this year. It would be a loan that we would be.
That is USDA rural development loan.
But from what I understand, putting new meters in. That are more accurate will probably raise our revenue.
Maybe.
Because our. What I understand is the odds are greatly in our favor that they will.
It's one of the variables that we know.
Most readers don't read. High.
No.
Is what I.
That's the gospel.
Honestly, they, they never read.
They never read.
So, so, yeah, I mean, despite, you know. I, I, I can say in thirty years of having sent a meter to get a test fit has resulted in fewer than five meters over the course of my career. Where they honestly could say to a homeowner, yes, your meter was at fault and the only month that's five out of, like I said. About hundreds of thousands of meter read cycles. So, um. You know, that, that doesn't happen. So it's a two-fold thing. So we know that with the cities, what you call it unaccounted for water or water loss. There's, there's two parts to that. One is water that is not being metered accurately. So even if you, if you're twenty-six hundred meters out there and every one of those meters is reading ten percent low. That's a huge amount of unbilled water. And of course, the other part is water that never goes through a meter to begin with, and that's where your service line leaks, uh, your service line replacement. Right, so, so goal one is keep the water in the pipe so that we know exactly where it's going. And then two, measure it accurately so that it can be built for. Now, every municipality has a certain amount of unaccounted for water. Or unbilled water. Some of that has to do with fire activity. You know, we're obviously doing system maintenance and flushing. Replacing all the service lines doesn't guarantee that you're never going to have another leak of some kind. Whether it's a warming valve or something like that, but you're gonna take that number, which is now at like thirty-eight point seven percent. And reduce it to a manageable number. So AWW standard on a brand new, just installed, perfectly fine water system is like ten percent.
Eight to eight to ten percent.
Thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight point seven. So that means if you're paying a city for a million gallons of water, you're only able to collect sixty-two percent of.
So henceforth, why we have the, the large scale projects that we need.
A prioritized project that's also prioritized project because of residents. So, you know, the, the whole state is blowing up with all these news stories about lead service lines. But even if you had a lead service line at your house, you can still flush your toilet. But if I have a water service that fails, now my family has no water. And we don't know where these are happening sporadically throughout the township, you know, and then not, a lot of times we're not able to respond, you know, the same day, maybe a couple of days. That that family is without water or food, can get that water restored to them. And people have to understand. That that level of unpredictability and unreliability impacts not only the quality of life for your residents. But also directly impacts your ability to budget and finance. Eagle looks at, at the township that's having responsibility to adequately fund. Your water system and right now you, you're trying to shoot a moving target and, and it's not gonna get any better.
So. Now, it's. A lot of variables that we're trying to, we finally are getting all of our ducks in a row of how to actually tackle. All of these concerns and what that future is gonna look like.
Yeah, yeah, so which, which means revisiting the revenue side.
But often.
Yeah.
Yeah. So when you see these capital projects, what you can see is say that you took out a messer up loan. Um, for, you know, a million dollars. Then you're going to see a, a revenue of a million dollars and you're going to see the expenditure out to contractor or whatever. And then those two in and outs cancel each other out. Then it becomes converted to a bond payment. That goes forward for however many years, thirty years, four years that is amortized over. That's where you predict your rates based on those amortized expenses and not the large lump sum in and out expenditures.
He's gay.
Yeah.
But to answer your earlier question, you were right.
Yeah.
And, and right now for that water tower expenditure especially, um, there is. It's not in a position where you're going to be able to get any funding, um, for this year because of, you know, that system, you know. You can't, you're, you're outside of the window to get a grant or vote for a project that's coming up at four hundred.
Yeah.
So it's the future projects that are gonna come in that way.
Right.
And so that particular project, which also has a sense of urgency because I guess we don't want another leak. Out of the water tower, we want to find out what's going on, that it gets fixed, um, is something that you're potentially looking at a short-term. You know, funding source and utilizing that windfall that you have to fund part of that. And then looking at the other projects that are needed in a more, you know, thoughtful way as far as this funding and, and budget.
Agreed.
Any other additional questions or comments in regards to the enterprise fund? Because we will be addressing it. On a very regular basis moving forward. There's a lot of variables. We have a lot of, uh. Lot of items out, um, that we still don't know in terms of the discussions of ITA. So when we have those conversations with Eagle, uh, start looking at whether it's a submission by June, what, what those potentials look like. But as Miss Wynn stated, that's not gonna have a direct correlation to this upcoming fiscal. Um, so. We'll have to, uh. Make plans accordingly and make the decisions of utilization of the potential use of ARPA funds. To offset some of the, the known expenditures and projects that we have upcoming for this year.
In the next forty-five days. So.
I, I guess.
For the tower, for the town.
For the tower, but I, I doubt that we'll have that expenditure in the next forty-five days.
Oh, April first.
For a rate. I'm talking about the utilization of ARPA funds.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, Russ, did you have? Comment, sir?
Oh, you know, I, my, my point was that, uh, and I think I'm tracking with at least Steve on this. Is that. I'm okay with using ARPA funds. We haven't got to a vote on that yet. We'll apparently take care of that at another meeting, but, but, uh. Um, I'm okay with using a couple hundred thousand of the ARPA funds. For what we have to do with that thirty-two tower. Um, I'm not excited about using it for these bigger projects and, and so on. And, and I think I'm tracking with Catherine then in regard to, uh. Uh, we, we decide what the funding needs are and then we. We. Seek bonds, bond funding. And probably at a smaller level, grants for certain things, but, uh, uh, we've got time to do that. Uh, we don't have time. To decide how we're going to. Fund the, uh, the tower. That's, that's where I was at and that's what I was hearing. So I, I'm hopefully we're gonna be able to find agreement in, in those areas.
Nathan, I don't, uh, the, the negative, uh, two hundred and forty-nine thousand is amended to tentatively what? Uh, this would be under the net revenue appropriation fund five ninety-two, where it has a deficit of a quarter of a million on the, on the, on the printout that I have.
Oh, yeah, and I, I, it's hard for me to compare cuz that was there again when this was created was.
No, I understand. What, what did it, what I can, I just can't see it on the screen.
So, uh, our, our deficit with the recommendations and changes that we've just had today, uh, put us at a deficit of ninety-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Yep, sorry.
And by the way, that is, that is strictly as it relates to the enterprise fund. That's not the overall.
Just the enterprise.
Gotcha.
In that regard. Any other questions for today? I mean, yeah, we're gonna be, like I said, we'll be having these conversations, uh, especially when we sit down and have. Probably following, uh, the joint meeting with the, the planning commission and having that CIP. But we're gonna actually have as a board, some decisions of the utilization of funds and then offsetting. How to get through this year, uh, with what our knowns are in terms of known expenses and create a water rate for this upcoming fiscal.
But if somebody. Would it be, Kath, it would be. Putting together a water recourse to give us X amount of funds?
We'll, we'll have to sit down and look at that, um. You know, once, once you guys get to a point where we have our budget numbers and then we'll look at what the current revenue and anticipated water sewer sales are. And what that looks like as far as on sufficiency. So that's a, for, for one year, that's a pretty easy math for now. It's when you start looking at ten, twenty year projections that, you know, you're gonna need those to look at. Like I said, those will become bond payments and separate for those water cap or projects. But for this year, you know, Nathan, you know, Russell, or I can talk about. You know, what those, what that map looks like as far as just to get things balanced out for this.
That's what I'm getting to is we have somebody that can do that. Right here.
She can definitely help the process. Otherwise, then it's looking at.
Go into a formal rate study. Um, one of the things that, that, um, happens with those. Um, is that you need that in, in have a financial expert involved in that. It can't just be your engineering firm. Um, so we do have some, some people that we can recommend. Once we get through the intent to apply and the project plans and, you know, find out from Eagle, hey, you're gonna get some funding for a fiscal year. And they're on a federal fiscal year. That's, that's the, our people, you know, don't quite grasp is they, they're, the project plan that you submit in this June. Would be something that would be funded in the federal fiscal year that begins October of twenty twenty-two and then goes into September of twenty twenty-three. And they, they release the funding on a quarterly basis. So once you know what, what funding you would get and when it would be potentially released. Then you can go through with your financial consultant, your bond counsel, whatever you have. And, you know, get through all the processes for, for that part of it.
Yeah, well, there's certainly no question that we need to. Um, yes, making bond payments or principal payments with interest are, is certainly a more palatable way of budgeting. But at the same time, we need to look at making sure that our rates. Uh, move into the future so that we're doing just.
Yeah.
All, we gotta go well beyond just making ends meet. We have to, we have to anticipate.
And so you're gonna want to look at that with your financial consultant to look at. You know, what you're, what you're looking at. So my understanding of it is, is that. For bond purposes that you wanna look at things in, in minimum of a million dollars because by the time you go through the whole bonding process and. And public hearings and everything else and all the finance and all the cost of actually creating a bond. Scenario that anything less than that is not really financially worth it. So they're gonna try to track some of these, these projects lining up with your capital plan. Look at what that comes out to in payments and then they're gonna look at not just maintaining steady state. But they're gonna want you to help start building some kind of capital reserve. So that at the time that, so say that we, we took out a project for these sewer漏stations. And we know that, uh, the expected life of one of those pieces of equipment is twenty years. But they're gonna look at is the fact that you want your rates to have some kind of a, a steady increase, but of, of, you know, on a lower level. So that you're kind of building incrementally a capital reserve so that when you get to the useful life of that pump. You don't have a bank account balance of zero or if you have to buy new kind of, you know, take it down to zero. So, um, you know, there's a couple of different ways of looking at it, but that's, you know, where those financial guys get involved in it and. And can do it, you know, either in. You're gonna, you're gonna have to play catch-up a little. And and can do it, you know, either in, you're going to, you're going to have to play catch-up a little bit. Um, and it's probably going to be, you know, somewhat steeper increases initially. But then hopefully what happens is that it will become more of a rate of inflation.
Right.
After that, um, and you know, and and although residents always are concerned about their rates. They have to understand that cost of doing business increases at the rate of inflation, whether it's the power that you bills that you pay to run those. Those pump stations or the commodity charges that you're going to get in regard to, you know, the water system from the from the city. Or all the other expenses are not going to remain static. So, you know, to get a a on an annual increase of one or two or three percent is a lot more palatable to a resident. Than, you know, having it remain flat and then having three successive, you know, fifteen or twenty or or twenty percent increases. Um, that are going to cause some levels.
Well, by way of example, uh, if if we had to uh. Bump our rates to cover the the proposed CIP, it'd be somewhere around thirty-five percent.
Exactly.
And so a pretty big bill to swallow.
Yeah, exactly.
So obviously, as previously stated.
Right.
A plethora of upcoming conversations will ensue. Reasonably so. Any other questions for Miss Win or the enterprise as it stands just today? Uh, Russ, uh, any uh, another opportunity, if you have any questions, comments?
And no, nothing else on this. Uh, we'll 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 have lots of conversations down the road about rates and bonds and all sorts of things.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I I look forward to it. So with that being said, uh, obviously we'll be revisiting. But I will save it with the the changes that we've made thus far. Uh, we have to, uh, outside of this, we need to have a discussion of our, the last. Department that we have not discussed yet and set forth a date uh, for the public safety fund. So. Hopefully, everybody has a calendar.
Well, obviously, next Tuesday will be a problem because we have that CIP.
Yeah. We'll wait for both the clerk and the treasurer to return with their calendar so that we can schedule our next budget workshop.
Are you looking at next week, Nathan?
Uh, I'm probably not looking at next week with, when I'm looking at my calendar.
Okay.
But uh, it'd probably be hopefully uh, potentially into the uh, the first week in March. Because I don't think any of us really want to hop on um, that discussion on a Friday.
Were you looking at a certain day?
First week in March.
I'm completely booked that day.
Well, we would have as a capacity would be um, late morning on Wednesday, the second.
Don't we have a meeting?
The first thing in the morning.
Yeah. Oh, late morning, got it.
Who got that day?
I'm I'm okay after eleven thirty AM.
Uh, well, then do we wanted to say uh, one PM on Wednesday, the second?
That could work.
That way everybody could have an opportunity to eat a little lunch, then come in non-hangry. So then uh, let's call it for Wednesday, the second at one PM. We'll have our uh, budget workshop to discuss the public safety fund. Are we in agreement there?
Yes.
Okay. I will. Okay.
One PM, March second.
That is correct. And that is for the primary purpose of public safety fund. Uh, with that being said, uh, any discussion for the good of the order? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of.
We have a motion on the table to adjourn and support further discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
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 Same, meeting adjourned at ten fifty-six. Thank you very much.